My name is Chris Turner. I'm a state representative. I represent District 101, which is Arlington, Mansfield, and Grand Prairie. Served seven terms in the legislature. And, you know, in that time, I've learned that sometimes those of us who have the privilege of serving in the legislature, we disagree at times on issues. But when it comes to Tarrant County, when it comes to working for the people who sent us here, we figure out a way to collaborate, usually on a bipartisan basis, and collaborate with Tarrant County Commissioners' Court and your able staff to get things done for this county. And I want to continue doing that in Austin. But I say, commissioners and judges, an event like we saw a few weeks ago makes that more difficult. Now, all of House District 101 is in Precinct 2, Commissioners' Precinct 2. So all of my 200,000 constituents are also Commissioner Simmons' constituents. In southeast Tarrant County, we admire and respect Commissioner Simmons because she fights for our community. She does what is right. And she's not afraid to ask questions and challenge people. I think we've seen some of that today, as I've been watching. And as best I can tell, that's what Commissioner Simmons did on April 16th, when she questioned the wisdom of a taxpayer-funded contract for a political consultant. It's a reasonable question. I don't know the ins and outs of that contract, but her questions, I thought, were reasonable. But your response, respectfully, Judge, telling our duly-elected county commissioner to quote, "sit there and be quiet," unquote, is out of line, disrespectful, and unbecoming of the important office you hold. And then, Judge, you doubled down on your offensive comments by telling Commissioner Simmons to, quote, "have a semblance of class," unquote. That's offensive on a whole different level. There's only one person in this episode who showed a deficit of class, and that would be you, Judge O'Hara. So Judge and Commissioners, you have serious issues to confront in this county. We've heard about a lot of those today in your meeting. Once again, the county jail is on the front page of the paper for all the wrong reasons. Yet another tragic in custody death. And the DA really is going to relitigate the Crystal Mason case after eight years, after she's been acquitted by the Court of Appeals? These are the things that I would urge this court to focus on and get a handle on. That's what the people in Tarrant County expect, that's what the people of Tarrant County deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following Mr.
Good afternoon again, Court, Judge, Commissioners. Well, I'm glad that, out of all the speakers prior to me, all but two were here helping demonstrate white entitlement, white fragility, and white Christian nationalism. When I read the news, when I read the news of what occurred in this court on April 16th, I was horrified. Commissioner Simmons, I'm here to support you. I was living in Arlington and voted for you as my precinct commissioner, and I just want you to know that your representation in this court inspires me that an elected official can follow through on their promises. Thank you for asking the hard questions, even when you're challenged and given opportunities that would make anyone say the word "damn." Thank you for bringing honor and integrity to this court. Judge O'Hare, after watching the recording of the April 16 session, I believe you owe every woman in Tarrant County an apology, but most especially to the honorable colleague on your right who demonstrated grace and valor in the face of shameful behavior. I find it the height of hypocrisy and very telling that the Commissioners' Court decided today would be the day that we're going to sign an agreement on decorum when completing an audience participation form. I ask that, as the judge of this court, you model the same decorum in all interactions as well. Your words dishonored, demeaned, and disrespected Commissioner Simmons and your position, all of which are acts of behavior listed as reason for cancellation of speaking time, removal from the court, and being held in contempt according to the required decorum statement that is on our form and on your website. That is now printed for every Tarrant County Commissioners' Court hearing. I don't believe elected officials of this court are exempt from adherence to these rules. We can quote a lot of Bible verses and claim a lot of things in the name of Jesus, but that's really not what he calls us to do. And it actually disrespects and dishonors our faith when we do those things. This country is not just for Christians. It wasn't made by only white pilgrims. And let's not forget the enslaved on which this economy was built upon, the genocide of the indigenous people from which this country was stolen. So when all of the self-righteous white members of this community come up here to claim that, I just want to refute it, that that is part of the lie and part of the narrative that continues to be sold.
Thank you.
My name is Dela Sam. Judge O'Hara, I'm thankful that you have to sit right there and be quiet until I finish my comments. It was very disheartening to witness the level of disgust that transpired here in this courtroom. Your responses and tones were, in my view, completely unacceptable. Your manner of addressing Commissioner Simmons seemed to undermine her position and belittle her contributions, which is not conducive to a respectful or productive dialogue. The feelings of being patronized as if one were a mere child is not only demeaning but also dismissive of one's professional capabilities and experiences. It is essential that, in disagreements, especially when it involves community leaders, in a public forum, the utmost respect and consideration should come first. You should strive for a community where discourse elevates our understanding and resolves our differences, rather than one that diminishes the value of our counterparts. You, sir, somewhere down the line have forgotten that you don't own Tarrant County. You have no right to sit back and tell anyone, man or woman, to be quiet. You are an elected official. And I've heard a lot about voting today. I've sat and watched the monitors on your aggressiveness, even in your tone today. If you could monitor your attitude like you have this courtroom today, you probably would be one hell of a man. But until then, you need to exercise your right at home, not on this dais.
Ben Price, I'm the senior pastor of Broadway Baptist Church, and I'm here today because Alyssa Simmons is a champion for the people of Tarrant County. Time and again, Commissioner Simmons has shined her consistent light on the egregious events taking place in our county jail, and she has shown tremendous courage in asking uncomfortable questions about the transparency and sound governance of this commission. It was an uncomfortable question for which a fellow member of the court recently told her to sit there and be quiet. Commissioner Simmons, I know you don't need me to say this, but I say it nonetheless. Don't keep quiet. Don't stop speaking. Don't stop inquiring. Don't stop shining your bright light and asking your good questions. There are answers to those questions. And though those answers may be hidden in darkness now, the light shall surely shine forth and find them. And the light shines in the darkness, and the darkness does not overcome. The light shines in the darkness of the death of Robert Miller and the death of Anthony Johnson, and the cell of chastity conscientious, and the case of Crystal Mason, and the contracts of this commission, and the tragic injustice afflicting Kyrie Campbell and all of the others experiencing mental illness and intellectual and developmental disabilities in the Tarrant County Jail. The light shines in these dark places, and the darkness will not snuff it out. The light shines in the darkness, and it will not be told where to go and what to do. Keep shining your light, Commissioner Simmons. You are a champion, and we are with you. And as one additional addendum, I might add, DA Sorrells came today and complained about the length of the day, beginning at 10:00 a.m. And I would just note that there are two overflows of bodies of people who have been waiting at the same time. And when the DA's name was called the first time, the agenda was changed for him, something that has not been given in the way of courtesy to anyone else other than the DA himself. And I would add that there was, just a year and a half ago, a change towards from weekly to bimonthly meetings. And I would say that a much better case was made today by the DA for going back to weekly meetings than was made for the further prosecution of Crystal Mason.
Thank you.
My name is Josh Lucas. We're going to quote scripture today. I'm going to just quote Matthew. It says, "Woe to you scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites, for the mint and..." You tied the mint and Dylan Cuman and have neglected the weightier provisions of the law, justice, and mercy, and faithfulness, but these are the things you should have done without neglecting the others. "You blind guides who strain out a gnat and swallow a camel." I have watched this court for the past two years and watched the white majority vote defund community projects providing permanent supportive housing for individuals experiencing homelessness with chronic disabilities, and childcare for families experiencing financial difficulties to fund the for-profit industrial prison complex to the tune of $44 million. Although this contract was canceled, none of that money will be recouped for these vital programs, and the contract will effectively be kept until its initial end date. You strain out a gnat but swallow a camel. Mr. Judge O'Hare, when you berate Alyssa Simmons for purchasing furniture for her office and ask for $5,000 for a young man who is a political consultant whom you are friends with his family for an undisclosed job opportunity, you strain out a gnat and swallow a camel. And when you question her about Twitter citing that she's practicing her fundamental rights expressed in the Bill of Rights, and she asks you the same question, and you censor her by telling her to sit there and be quiet, you strain out a gnat but swallow a camel. When you defund programs like Girls Inc. to the tune of $200,000, which empower local young women and finance sheriff training facilities, when we already have a world-class criminal justice training facility built in 2017 for $100 million, recognized as the best-in-class by the FBI, you strain out a gnat and you swallow a camel. When you remove a black man today here in court for speaking two seconds past his time and bang your gavel when people express emotion to the atrocities that are happening all around us, overlook Pastor Ryan Price's chance to speak on the deaths in the jail, even when he's been acknowledged by the administrator, you strain out a gnat and swallow the camel of your own double standard of white male privilege. Release the videos of Anthony Ray Johnson Jr., who was pepper sprayed on April 21st in the Tarrant County Jail, resulting in his death. Release Kaier and fund a mental health public defender's office.
Thank you.
And I'm going to change gears just a little bit. I do want to remind you that Kaier Campbell is an example of the people with mental health problems that may die in this jail because of your inaction over the last 16 months, and I hope you'll do something to address that. Secondly, because of the flip-flop on the agenda, I need to speak about something that I'm not going to be able to stay for, and that is this. Commissioner Simmons, had the DA bothered to stay around for the meeting, I would like to have had you ask him questions about H1, 2, and 3. Just how much money do we spend in court because of mismanagement of our jail? Just how much money do we allocate to paying off the harmed and wounded and dead because of mismanagement in our jail? Now, in my remaining time, I'm going to shift gears slightly. I had the privilege of saving my county commissioner from an embarrassing ethical faux pas. Now, I've got a long history here, going back to working for common cause back in '72, when a majority of the legislature was coming in was new because of all the ethical problems there, and we passed 10 bills to reform legislation. Fast forward, 2003, I have this history. I had an unintended press conference when I was the only person to vote against Tom Praddock, and I said, in answer to the question, "Why'd you vote against him? That was kind of politically suicidal. He is ethically challenged." I want to give this court the opportunity to reverse itself on the obvious ethical challenges that you're dealing with. Thankfully, Commissioner Flackis wasn't there, and we prevailed on that issue. I was not here to see the exchange at the last meeting. We did not prevail then. And Lord knows, it was, what's left of the Star Telegram, there was a front-page story about something that people seemed to be impatient with Commissioner Simmons for asking so many questions about that tid. But you can see now what was involved there. I didn't even understand her line of questioning at that time. I can see now that it's kind of like the tiffs in this town. They are run of, by, and for the private profit interest of people in charge, mainly white privileged people who do not understand the history of oppression that they've been a part of.
Allow me to properly introduce myself. I am Ciara Hackett, founder of Goddess Strength Ministry, The Younger Generation. I'm blessed and grateful for the opportunity to stand in the midst of the feud during this impact situation created on behalf of women of color, men of color, and children of color in the Tarrant County District, as well as worldwide. I stand to back the commissioner as the world backs to blue, based off the conversation on April 16, 2024. If we elected her to represent the many voices in the community, it's up to us to stand in the gap and be the voice for her that was silenced in that courtroom that day. Tom Judge O'Hara stated that with animosity, "Sit there and be quiet," following the statement, "Have some class." I will run the courtroom, you will not. It's highly inappropriate and unprofessional for the courtroom. Based off facts, court commissioners have the same jurisdiction and exercise the same powers and duties as the judges of the court with respect to infractions and small claim actions and other matters pursuant to stipulation of the parties. A conversation based off who controls their social media pages truly does nothing for the community, nor does it address the matters that should be prioritized. Why ask the question if you're not going to allow the answer to be heard? That's very egotistical and unruly. Thursday afternoon, Tom O'Hara's statement was published and was made to dilute the fact that respect was not given. It was pointing the finger to blame, yet we could do the same by pulling up many facts of many. But we stand here as backup power. Respect is earned when it is given. We won't let it go unnoticed like the issues we have today. You say she pulls a race card? Yeah, y'all are all racist out loud, based off the pain expressed by black families today. Clearly, it's all a distraction. The behavior is very subjective. If it happens at the bottom, you can believe that it happens at the top for many of people of color in different situations and ways, behind the scenes and hidden in plain sight. In conclusion, if you feel nothing was wrong with this situation, you are the problem too. The problem is we have bigger issues in the community to prioritize. Race, submission, and ego does not belong at the top when clearly we need childcare funding, more resources to provide for families, missing children right now, homeless, veterans that roam the streets, lack of care for people in the jail, the long-term sentence for minor accusations. Instead, we argue about who controls their social media accounts. We need help, and the social media feed is not going to help us. Please focus on the mission. Work together, one nation, one fight, right? In our quote, "Don't let the rain stop you from your voice being heard," is Commissioner Simmons. Y'all are guilty. Y'all have the right to remain silent. Our voice matters, and God we trust.
Thank you.
God be, I hope I'm not out of order. Okay. I just need to say, first of all, that it's astounding to me to hear the certitude with which some white people come up here and talk about race. Let's at least have the humility to examine our white privilege before we talk about that. Okay, I'm really here to talk about Kaier Campbell, 21 years old, with a disability that renders him unable to understand things beyond an eight-year-old. He was arrested from a group home in December, months ago, December, and he's still in jail. This is a familiar story. Kaier was having a manic episode that called for help. He needs a mental health support coming to him, but instead, the police took him to jail, where his condition is, of course, deteriorating. I would really like to know who it is who decides that someone like Kaier, which we found out from a speaker earlier today, should be in the competency restoration program? That makes no sense. Zero sense. He understands things on an eight-year-old level, and you're trying to restore... It's ridiculous. It's cruel. It's outrageous. It's brutal. Who makes that decision? Do we really want another Kelly Mastin story here? Another chastity conscientious? Like Kelly and chastity, this young man needs care, not punishment. We're calling for the release of Kaier Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you. Following...
My name is Mindy O'Whittier, and my remarks are my own. On April 16th, Tarrant County Commissioner Simmons was told by a peer to sit there and be quiet. Let's consider that remark from a rhetorical perspective using an established academic protocol known as critical discourse analysis. With any use of words, there is the language itself, as well as the subtext and the context. Subtext is what we mean when we talk about reading between the lines. The sub refers to the underlying text. Context is the social system or structural framework in which a conversation takes place. Let's consider the context. First, the comment was made by a white male towards a black female. This is contextually relevant because it's consistent with a pattern and practice in which white males historically obstruct black female voices. Second, the position of county judge and the position of county commissioner are constitutionally equal. Any actions by a county judge to assert dominance in operational matters of the court represent misplaced authority. Given the context of the remarks, the subtext becomes clear. Implied underneath was, "Know your place. Your voice is subjugated to mine. Respect my inherent authority as a white male." Patriarchy may be the rule of order in your personal house, but it is not the rule of order in this public house. The rules of decorum that we had to sign in order to speak today say that this is not a forum for the demeaning of any individual or group. Why, then, was an elected seat of this Commissioners' Court used to demean Ms. Simmons last month? It was indignant entitlement at the audacity of being held to account. I offer a quote by Robin D'Angelo. "It is white people's responsibility to be less fragile. People of color don't need to twist themselves into knots, trying to navigate us as painlessly as possible." And let's be clear, the disrespect doesn't end with being told to sit there and be quiet. It's demonstrated in the arrogance of DA Sorrell, acting like Commissioner Simmons was wasting his time because he had to be present today. And it is represented in Sheriff Wayborn's refusal to give a briefing on jail deaths at her agendized request. The disrespect of Commissioner Simmons is blatant and persistent and inexcusable. In closing, I echo demands for the immediate release of Kaier Campbell so he can receive the mental health care that he needs. His continued incarceration is inhumane.
Thank you. Following Mr. Bill Akowski.
My name is Bishop Mark Kirkland to the Tarrant County Commissioners' Court. As a retired United States Marine, it's a shame how this country uses us and then throw us away. I feel like Mark Twain, there are two Americas, one that sits as captives free and one that captives is free. Did we see... It leads me to ask the question, did we see the real events and exchanges that happened a couple of weeks ago, or some of us just that blinded by our own agenda? The jail and the KKK has always been a way to control our village. Historically, the same people that locked us up were active members of the KKK, from Tulsa, Oklahoma, to Fort Worth, Texas. This system has destroyed our village. Since 2017, 63 inmates have died in the town-county jail. That's seven deaths a year. What indignation. I hear Sheriff Wayborn saying, "Be patient." Sir, we've been patient long enough. This is insidious. Sheriff Wayborn, you say things publicly, but personally, I know you're playing political games behind the scene. I agree with Anthony Johnson's family. This is the last one. I agree with Commissioner Simmons. An independent federal investigation needs to take place. The Texas Rangers are an outstanding organization of law enforcement, but year-to-date, they haven't gotten a handle on the fullness here in Tarrant County. This judge, this judge, this court, this city, this county has let us down. Most of all, you have set relations with our village back 65 years to the Civil Rights Movement, when it was okay for you to speak to us in any manner you wanted to. Our village is highly offended. Until you do right by us, we will continue to strongly force our legitimate disapproval and discontentment with this court. Dear Commissioners and Honorable Mr. Judge, what is the problem with our sheriff? He is a city employee. Why in the hell can't this court get an employee to come to deal with his constituency? It is an indictment against you, an authority that you think that you have in this city. We demand that the sheriff would come and face the taxpayers in his constituency. He's not our friend. He's not our associate. We hired him. We paid him, Mr. Judge, and we demand that he bring himself in here and be accountable to his constituency. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Following Ms. Glasscock, we have...
Good afternoon, County Judge O'Hara and Commissioners. My name is Joanna Cardoza. I am an Arlington resident, woman of faith, wife, mom of four, grandma, community volunteer, community advocate, and the Arlington Lulac President. I have had the pleasure of working side by side for about a decade now with Commissioner Simmons in our Arlington community, working on issues affecting Arlington residents, issues such as proper access to a quality education for all Arlington children, fair hiring practices, housing issues affecting the most vulnerable in our community, health disparities taking souls too early from loved ones, and the lack of representation for minorities, just to name a few. Alyssa has been nothing but an amazing, loving mentor to me and has been a valuable ally to the Arlington Latino community. Speaking up for one's community is not always easy, especially in unsafe spaces, spaces with leadership that are not accepting of others' differences. People like to complain about the way women of color and I conduct ourselves when advocating for issues affecting the most vulnerable in our community. We have no apologies for being assertive when it comes to speaking up for our community. What some of these same people don't say is how they have had the pleasure of gaslighting me for many years. Discussion about the color of my skin undermined it as an equal participant because I'm a bilingual and told to ask for a separate meeting so my Spanish-speaking community can participate in public meetings. Asked if I was running for office because I wanted to represent, quote, "Mexicans" in my community. How ignorant, right? And then being told to be quiet and sit down. Now, how many women of color in this room have heard this many times, over and over again? Commissioner Simmons and many women like I deserve respect, the right to speak up for our communities in a safe environment, because we all know that if we don't have a seat at the table, we will be the meal at the table. In conclusion, many in this community are tired of the gaslighting women of color receive. Our ancestors fought and died for us to be here, and we are ready to take our seats. Enough of being told to sit and be quiet. Commissioner Simmons was elected to represent the residents of Precinct 2, and she is doing an amazing job and has my full support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Brown, and I'd like to say thank you, Mr. O'Hara, for waking up the sleeping Black Panther of Tarrant County. Sit here and be quiet. Sit here and be quiet. With those words, you woke up so many black people, and I really want to thank you because we would not be coming to the polls like we are. With that saying that, the way you said that, it made it a serious matter in the black community. Because we haven't been this unified on a particular topic in so many years. We haven't been this committed to rectify this racism in this community, really, since the summer of 1991, when Joss Hendrix, William George Roberts III, and Christopher William Brooks participated in the racially motivated killing of Donald Thomas and the drive-by shooting on Cradis Street in Arlington, Texas. Hendrick said, this is recorded in court, that he said, "Shoot that nigger." There's that nigger. And they shot him in the head. June 7, 1991, in Arlington, Texas. Donald Thomas was murdered for no other reason than the color of his skin. Racism exists in Tarrant County. Racism exists in Tarrant County. It was alive when Opalee's home was burned down and is still alive today in Tarrant County. Alyssa Simmons' voice must not be silenced. She is a light in a very dark space in Tarrant County Commissioners Court.
Thank you.
I encourage you to...
Thank you. Your time is up. Next.
All right. I want to add my voice to the release of Kaier Campbell. When you hear his story and the circumstances of why he's in the county jail, it's just another example of how we are failing our folks in Tarrant County with the way we are arresting our mental health residents in Tarrant County and keeping them in a jail system that potentially can have them killed. And so I'm calling for the release of him as well as everyone else who has. I want to thank Commissioner Simmons for all the amazing work you've been doing and how you've been bringing a lot of items to light that is really important for the community to know about. From what is happening with the jail to what is happening within procedures of this Commissioners Court. And I think fundamentally what it represents is something that is really lacking within the Tarrant County Commissioners Court, which is accountability. There is a lack of accountability in a number of different areas. And it starts with you, Judge O'Hare. The fact that you were unable to apologize for a moment that maybe got the best of you, but instead doubled down with a press release that continues to encourage a combative nature within this court. And I find it interesting that you have emphasized today decorum to the degree that you've emphasized it when, I don't know if you are living up to the standards of importance that you're asking people attending this court to live up to. And that's something that is fundamentally a flaw within leadership of Tarrant County, that we don't have accountability. We don't have accountability over a sheriff that will not show up and answer for the numerous deaths within our county jail and will not be held accountable for the deaths themselves. We had a big conversation about technology and systems needing a bond or insurance so that the scope of cost doesn't increase. Yet we have no conversation about human lives and what kind of accountability should be held when they are lost under our watch and under your watch. We also have a DA who comes here to talk about why he's trying to case against a Tarrant County resident after eight years of it being in the public eye, after eight years of it going through the court systems. And his number one reason was because he wants to scare people around voting. There is not accountability amongst this leadership in Tarrant County. And shame on all of y'all. And I look forward to working with the people to make sure we have representation that is accountable.
All right, next we have...
Top of the evening to everyone. I came here with one agenda. And I am so, I'm so confused and I stand with mixed emotions. This is my first time here. My name is Krista Daniels. I am the widow of the late Pastor W.G. Daniels. And I have heard so much. I'm one that encourages. I'm one that uplifts people. But today I saw and I heard something that's not of God. And I sat there and I was fighting back tears. I did see the tape where you stated to this young lady, "Be quiet, hush or what have you. Act, react, or act and respond." I don't know what caused that. I don't know. All I know is I saw it and not only did I see it, but my daughter that's at Columbia University in New York, she saw it. And so she said, "Mom, what's going on?" My thing is, how do we, what is the answer to this unrest in here? We have an unrest in here. We have people on this side that's for you. We have people on this side that's for you. And we don't even know how to deal with it. Who is she that we should be mindful of? Who are you that we should be mindful of? Who are we that we should be mindful of? Somewhere along the line, we have to let the dust settle and come to an agreement with each other. I've heard families who have lost their loved ones. I've heard mothers stand at this podium and cry. I've heard people that would attack this person. I've heard people that attacked you. I've heard people that supported you. I've heard people that supported her. What do we do with this unrest? How can we handle it? Is there any way that we can come together? Sit down at the table and talk instead of us fighting each other? We can't get anything done. So what is the answer to this unrest? I would ask that you would just go back to your places of abode and talk to the God that you serve. And may the God you serve be with you forever.